Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Would you, can you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's your pleasure, roll call, please.
Flash.
Here.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Raker.
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. That would be a good thing to do.
You want someone to shut the door?
No, we would like, we'd like a motion to exclude the mayor for since she's out of town.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes. Now, now, let's acknowledge some communications in reports.
I have a few meetings to announce. The Beautification Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 5th, at 7:00 PM. Their meeting will be held at the Mount Clemens Public Library. The Historical Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 12th, at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will meet on Wednesday, May 6th, at 7:00 PM. And the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this week has been canceled.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Pro-Tan, oh, she had a question.
I'm sorry.
I just wondered, last time you said that you would have the public safety statistics.
Yeah, I'm still missing something from the Sheriff's Department, and with your indulgence, I'll provide it at the next meeting jointly together. I did get the Fire Department, and I could go back to my desk and get the Fire Department if you want to get it right now, but I don't have the full information on the Sheriff's Department yet, and I think I talked about it at the prior meeting. They've had a system upgrade, and we've had experience with that kind of a system upgrade and the issues that come out of it, so they've got issues with getting the information out of their systems the way that they used to, so that's the issue right now. So I apologize, I can get back to my desk and grab it and take care of it if need be, but the only one I have is the Fire Department.
Just do them both on the 18th, if you would.
Okay. That's my, that was my intent, so.
Adoption of the agenda.
I'm going to amend the agenda to move item 10A from the consent agenda and to break it up and to make it three items, nine, G, H, and I for each individual appointment. And so you will have the Board of Zoning Appeals as G, Historic Commission as H, and Public Library as I. Moved, approved, as amended.
I don't think we need a second anymore, according to your memo.
This is the time during the meeting that anyone can address this, this body. We, if you'd come forward to the mic, we just ask that you give us your name and your address, and please adhere to the three-minute rule that we have. Anyone like to come forward?
Laura Fournier, oh, I can't even say my name, I'm so upset. Laura Fournier, 70 Logwick. Eleven acres of land in this city is very valuable. That proposal would pay less in taxes than I pay on my house. Can I all get real snarky about my house, or whatever, but I pay a lot of taxes. The, to take eleven acres and spend it, or, get, when we don't have sidewalks, when our demo budget never is big enough to take down houses that have been left empty or falling apart for years, when our roads are a mess, to let eleven acres of land be used for a project that would generate thirty-two-hundred dollars for the income for this city is the most absurd thing I have ever heard in my life. And the, my fore sales time would be up so fast it wouldn't be funny.
Gloria Heller, 260 Cass. I actually had planned, I always have a Plan A, Plan B, and my Plan A tonight was to answer the mayor's charge from some meetings ago, back before I was sick, about I never come with facts, so I'm ready to come with facts and questions when she's here, so I'll go to Plan B, which kind of is a good segue tonight. I don't want to hear again of the DPW being used to subsidize the activities of the DDA. By that specifically, we're using DPW. Now that the, you know, they pull a shell game on you and you fell for it, you took the bait. Oh, I remember at, at these meetings, as well as Harbor Committee, oh my God, Steve Saffis, oh, that seawall, he held the seawall like a carrot and held the fact that he has excess money that we'd get him of our taxes that we don't have to give him, and we've always said, oh, well, we give him TIF money because they're allowed for promotion. Well, I've read the law now. We don't have to. You're choosing to give that money every year. And you've given him so much, they got a surplus in a city that's broke, that's bleeding its elderly and mixed-income people for property taxes to support a downtown that hasn't supported itself ever. Okay? And on top of that, you expect the DPW that we pay to go down there and take care now of their little sign, oh, well, Steve wants to fix that, he wants to get a reader board. No, you don't. No, let Mickey go do the sign. Give her something useful today for her twenty dollars an hour, okay? Because she's not doing anything as far as promoting the city. That's very obvious that she's, I mean, it's just not working. And they don't seem to want to spend their money on hiring a good marketing person, so leave the DPW alone, leave them out of that. They're undermanned and under-equipped as it is. Now, that all brings up something, and anybody who wants to know about it, see your city clerk, there's something called a ballot initiative petition. It doesn't require that many signatures to get something on the ballot. What we need to get on the ballot is we need to go back to 1954 and undo the mess. We need to get rid of the charter, we need to get rid of this body, it's an excess. This, by having this body, it makes us a representative democracy instead of direct. Before 1954, you didn't have a department head, Marilyn would have been the Commissioner of Finance, and if we didn't like her, we'd vote her out. Got completely rid of all these excess layers of government. And for what this commission has been producing, and what we have as a city, for what we have to show since 1954 of having a city commission, I think it's time we just fold it up. Last time I talked about anything, I said, oh, God, you know, these property taxes, we were told, oh, it would be just maintain the status quo, and then I hear someone, one of the commissioners saying, we got to raise, no, we're not raising any wages.
Thank you.
Rid of the commission.
Anyone else?
Yes, Joe E. Harrington, 152 Court Street, here in Mount Clemens. Our last commissioner meeting, I had a concern, two concerns. One about a dilapidated house on the corner of Court Street and Park. I brought my concern to this body Monday night, and Wednesday morning, it was addressed. Police came, they put the squatters out, they moved their furniture out. Now, no more squatters, no more prostitutes, no more drug deals. And the other concern that I had on Walnut about the rubbish that was there, it is ninety percent completed to date, and so I thank you. Job well done.
Scott Frye, 67 Eldridge. I talked to you about this earlier. I am filing a complaint with the State Tax Commission about the city assessor and the March Board of Review. Here is why. Actually, I spoke to them for about twenty minutes on the phone today, I spoke with Kelly, and she was quite interested in what I had to tell her. So here are some of my issues. Okay, I paid four thousand, three hundred dollars for a house a few years ago. How is it worth sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty, and three hundred and fifty dollars? How is that possible? She agreed with me. Okay. During the height of the market in 2003, when houses were going way above what they should have been worth, for example, a fifty thousand house went for what, eighty thousand? My house sold for thirty-five thousand dollars in 2003, again, during the height of the market. Again, how is it worth sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars now when the market is crappy? That makes no sense. There's more. I put up a shed, all right, an eight-by-eight wooden shed. The city assessor says it's worth eleven hundred dollars, okay? The shed was free, it was given to me by a friend of mine, because quite frankly, I'm too cheap to buy one, if I get something for free, I'm going to take it, okay? How is the shed worth a thousand dollars when it was free and it was used? It's worth about less than half that amount. All right, if anybody thinks my house is worth almost sixty-three thousand dollars, please buy it, I would be happy to move. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If we have concerns about this millage proposal, is that the time to speak now, or is this at some other point in time?
No, there's.
My name is.
If you're talking about the budget, sir?
Yes.
That's, this is not the time where the public hearings taking place on the budget.
When is that?
I didn't. About five minutes from now.
Five minutes from now?
Well, that's why I'm asking, this is, okay, this ain't the right time, thank you.
Item 9A. Item 9A.
Why don't have an agenda, I didn't see what you were.
It's on the door out there.
That's all right, it'll be a minute.
No, no, that's quite all right.
Dolores Kaciniak, 250 Euclid. I'm here to remind everyone about the Michigan Craft Show that we're having Saturday. I'm representing our Neighborhood Watch program. I've contacted mostly all the merchants in downtown, and we only have, like, twenty-three merchants, I thought we, so we had, and about eight of them donated coupons and money and gift items for the craft show. We're not here to make money, we're here to raise gas money so we can patrol the neighborhood at night. We're a nonprofit organization. So we will be Saturday in the McComma Place, I think near the fountain is where we're supposed to be, and we'd like everyone to come down, even just come down to say hello. We'll be there Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Loretta Siplin, I live in Clinton Township, my address is 22534 Cassman Street. I was glad to see the house torn down on Walnut, they're removing the property, it's been there quite a while. But you still have four more houses on Walnut that really needs to be looked at. One he was talking about on Court and Walnut, and there's another one, Walnut and Court too, they're like back-to-back to each other. There's also a house on Walnut, almost across from the one that's torn down. That house is boarded up too. And as you come down Euclid Street and run into Walnut, there's another house to your right, as you make a right turn, that you can see the hole in the roof, there's a pink sign on it. That needs to be torn down too. We have nice homes in that area, but the homes that are all boarded up, they're blight. They're dangerous for kids in the street, little small kids walking back and forth to school. They really should be torn down, even if you have to get the owner to make him tear it down. And I'm sure you must know who the owner is, because they pay taxes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mickey Weiss, 18, 200, Terror Drive, Clinton Township. I just wanted to clarify something for the residents. The DDA pays for all services that we get from the city, Jeff can verify that. I just want the community to know that we do not get a free ride, we do pay for all the services that we get when we have any special events. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Administrative Response to Issues or Questions Raised During Previous Meetings. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. I have several things to talk about this evening. Sidewalk issues, the prospect of increasing enforcement of codes related to sidewalks in the city was, was discussed at a work session of the Mayor and City Commission held this evening. Inclusion of funding for potential enhancement of our efforts in that area is also to be considered during the public hearing on our budget. That's the update to what's transpired here today. The Board of Review, a resident had questioned what were the qualifications for members of the Board of Review. Essentially, qualifications are being a resident of Mount Clemens and being willing to perform the function. Sheriff questions was also discussed at a prior meeting related to the additional complaints coming out of changes in weather, in loud music, parking on lawns, things of that nature. City administration has worked in the past and will continue to work with the sheriff's staff at our substation on enforcement related to these issues. As developments warrant, in other words, as things develop, we will come back and inform the city commission and the public about what happens in that regard. Number four, 217 North Walnut, we just had a update from the gentleman who was at the microphone a second ago. We did have action on that removal of the debris and finishing of the demolition of that property at 217 North Walnut. I do understand it's close to completed, and we expect it will be completed very shortly. 127 Court also, the gentleman discussed that as well. Just for clarification, the city does not own any residential lots with structures on site. The only lots the city does own are vacant residential lots, so we don't have any sites that are residential that we have that actually have structures on the, on the site. And as was mentioned, the city did perform a cleanup on that privately-owned property at 127 Court, which included board up of the structure. Another incident that was, or another issue that was brought up at a prior meeting that involved social media and concerns about how some social media sites are sort of have a feeling that they are an official city site when in fact they are not. City's doing some due diligence on that and checking into what's out there and what kind of contact we can make to social media networks to clarify that and make sure that there isn't any misleading that's going on. Number seven, street sweeping schedule request was made by Commissioner Hill regarding posting and adhering to a schedule for streets, street sweeping to facilitate cars being removed and to improve the impact of the street sweeping on the road. The DPS does recognize this as an issue, but can't really commit to a fixed schedule for street sweeping because of the staffing limitations that are in play. So when we have a more pressing need for service, say, for example, if there's a storm and there's multiple trees down blocking roads, things of that nature, we're going to shift resources from street sweeping to handling those more pressing service needs, which makes adhering to a schedule pretty much impractical or impossible. Civil infractions on code violations was also discussed per Commissioner Campbell's inquiry. We continue to evaluate the pros and cons of civil infraction versus criminal misdemeanor as consequences for code violations. It's something that the city will consider possible change in MO to maximize the effect of our enforcement actions. Funding resolution request was made by Commissioner Raker regarding lobbying for additional funding for infrastructure issues. The city administration is looking into developing an item on this front, and will present it to a meeting of the mayor and commission in the future. We're just doing some research on it to make sure that we can get the best benefit out of that, and I believe that's all I have this evening on the administrative responses.
Any questions? Commissioner Raker?
Yes, overall, I mean, a robust report, but I think it lacks a little bit of detail as far as when you say you're going to follow up or we're looking into things, and I think that would be helpful for us. I mean, I'm going to stay on top of it, but in general, I think it would be more helpful if you could project a deadline for yourself, on or before. That would be exceptionally helpful. In regards to the misdemeanor versus civil infraction, what's the holdup as far as just informing, enforcing what we have on the books? Because quite honestly, I get beat up pretty regularly about why don't we just enforce what we have on the books for the sidewalks? And so how can we sit here and, and hold our hands when we actually do have rules that aren't being actively enforced?
The issue on the civil infraction versus otherwise there, it just pertains to the consequences for our enforcement actions. So currently, we don't have anybody out there writing tickets where people are immediately assessed a ticket. It's a situation where we're putting out violations, providing time to address, to the extent they don't address it, taking them to court, things of that nature. So the, the discussion there is changing our MO in some ways to allow potentially for ticket writing. And in some cases, that could make sense, in other cases, that might not make sense, and that's what we're evaluating.
Now, on that point, I would imagine it's pretty costly to send Mr. Murray to courthouse to fight somebody on something that may be considered a trivial matter. Who sets the fee schedule as far as fines are concerned?
The court. The court. One hundred percent, the court.
Okay, but when I, when I see one hundred to five, not less than one hundred, not more than five hundred?
Under, under Michigan law, all a municipality can enforce is misdemeanors. And the maximum penalty for misdemeanor is ninety-three days and/or fines and costs up to five hundred dollars. So that's what sets that maximum, every misdemeanor calls, calls for that penalty.
So that does not include the costs of your services for cost recovery?
No, no.
And we can't recover that either?
Well, no. And what's going to happen is the court, you get a drunk driving, that's a misdemeanor, but every court in the tri-county area, the fines and costs are thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred, they load it on the costs. So there's no limit on the costs.
Okay, all right.
It's a five hundred fine plus cost.
Okay.
And all of our money, not ours, but all three communities, goes to operate the court. You know, if they had a deficit, they'd be coming back to each community and saying, provide us with, and our percentage is twenty percent, Harrison's twenty, and Clinton's sixty. So, and when they have a profit, or, you know, they have distributed funds back, they're distributed on the same method. And I believe the last two years, they have distributed monies back, as I recall.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Other comment? Okay. Move on to approval of the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting on April 20th.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, general business, Agenda Item 9A. Public hearing to consider the 2016 fiscal year budget for the city of Mount Clemens and the headly, headly millage rates. Need a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing to consider the 2016 fiscal year proposed budget and the headly millage rates.
Report.
Mr. Mayor? The budget adoption process for the city of Mount Clemens requires holding a public hearing, which is scheduled for today's date. The purpose is for us to have an open opportunity for the public to address the city on the budget as has been proposed by city administration and has been the subject of two work sessions of the mayor and commission at prior meetings to discuss that budget, and that's what we were here for today. Just as a clarification to begin with, we had public participation that was already part of our agenda for a regularly scheduled meeting. That part of the public participation has timeframes of three minutes and so on and so forth that are involved. This public hearing has a different set of rules related to that, and as such, we're ready to have a discussion on the proposed budget. Our city finance director, Marilyn Delugie, is here to, if she wants to do any kickoff to begin with, or have any, have any commentary, otherwise we'll, at the chair's discretion, go into any questions and answers.
Yeah, this, this is a public hearing, so anyone that wants to address?
You look at me and you're not going to?
Well, I think, I think, yeah.
You expressed the.
I think you're up.
My name is Rick Block, I live on 207 Cambridge. Picked up the information in the CNG paper, everybody, I assume, saw that. Little concerned about some of the things that are here. I have a bunch of questions, I made a couple of phone calls. Delugie was kind enough to talk to me one day for about forty-five minutes. Called her again this morning, and probably within ten minutes, I had information that I was seeking. I appreciate that, thank you. And you did ask the lady if I did show up and pick it up, because I was there when you did that. Anyway, I guess what I'm trying to figure out here, and I guess when I state some facts or, when I state some numbers that I take to be facts at this point, if I'm in error, you could flag me and tell me that I'm in error. If I read this correctly, they want to increase the budget limit from the current base of fifteen point nine-nine-four-six, and the proposed is twenty-two point one-two-seven-four. That's better part of thirty-eight percent increase. I don't know if too many people get a thirty-eight percent increase in anything these days. I went back, again, with Ms., with Ms. Delugie's help here, and I picked up what the public hearing stated for, I'll call this last year. When I speak of last year, I'm talking about thirteen, fourteen fiscal year. When I speak of this year, I'm talking about fourteen, fifteen, the current year that we're in, and I speak about the future one, that's the one that's a proposal that's coming up. If you go through and look at these things, most of the items that are called out are reasonably close, the estimated expenditures are relatively close to the estimated revenues. There's a couple, three exceptions to that, and going back and checking last year's, this year's, and next year's proposed, the same scenario floats out there with one exception. Expenditures usually come pretty close to matching the revenues. There's a couple places where that's not true. The last two general funds were, the revenues were exceeded, no, the revenues were short to the expenditures by five hundred thousand and one point two-six million. This one, you're going to be over by five hundred thousand. Not sure why there's a swing in the opposite direction, but there is. The one item that's in the called-out items here, the major streets, seems to be short, short, and more short. Last year, it was short expenditures versus revenues, ninety thousand. This year, it's short by two hundred and five thousand. Next year, it's going to be short by five hundred and forty thousand. She told me, when I called the first time, she took great pain to explain a couple things to me, that there were a couple of items that are outside the general fund. The retirement fund is one, which is the same as the pension fund. Dial-a-ride is one, and I think the sanitation fund was the other one, is that the other one? Okay. At least I wrote that down right. I guess I, my biggest question or concern at the moment seems to be with the retirement fund. And in last year's, the expenditures and the anticipated revenue, we anticipated getting fifty percent of our expenses in excess of fifty percent of expenses we were going to get. So we're going to take in half again as much as what we were going to spend. This year, we're at about a fifty percent. Next year, it's damn near double, it's like ninety-three percent. And the figures that they put down on a piece of paper said that we're anticipating spending four point seven million dollars next year, but we're going to take in nine point oh-seven-nine. Now, I know that, and she reminded me, that there's a, there's a retiree, a retirement board that takes care of all of this, so, and she mentioned that, and I said, well, just out of curiosity, where are we at to this year's budget? The current year? Now, when you look at the piece of paper that they put out, we were supposed to take in four point, no, we were supposed to spend four point seven million dollars, we're supposed to take in seven point two million. So we got two and a half million dollars there that we're going to be to the good. So I said, well, where are we at today? And she said, I, I didn't know the figure, and I don't know if she gave me one, but it's immaterial about the expenditures, because the expenditures should be fairly consistent, and across the three years, the expenditures are fairly consistent. But we're supposed to take in seven point two million dollars, but through March, three quarters of the year is done, all the taxes are collected, or close to it. I don't know where the revenues come from, we only take in four point one million. So we haven't covered the bill yet, but yet we were anticipating taking in seven point two. I guess where's the other two and a half million dollars coming from? Then you look at this year's, or the proposal one, the proposed one, the expenditures are pretty close again, four point seven-eight million as opposed to four point seven-two, but we're going to take in over nine million. but we're going to take in over nine million dollars, almost double. And I can imagine that the first response is to be, well, this fund is, you know, is a lot of the income from this fund is generated by the stock market and the economy and all that kind of stuff, and I just don't buy that. If, what I would guess I would really like to know, or what I would really find interesting is that for last year and this year, we were going to spend X, we were going to take in Y. What did we do last year, X versus Y? This year, we already, we know that we're, what X is going to be are relatively close, but we're two and a half million dollars short, and we only got three months to get it. Don't, doesn't seem too possible, too likely that's going to happen. And I happen to know that the market is better this year than it was last year. Now, I guess what I, the bottom line to this is that, where is all this extra money coming from in the revenue for the retirement fund, which is the biggest single item hitter on here? I mean, we're going to spend four point seven million, that's what we spent last year, we spent the year before that. But yet, we're going to take in nine million dollars. Well, we estimated seven point two for this year, and we're not there. My guess is, we're not going to make it. I don't know what we did the year before that, which would be my last year, but if the performance isn't that great, what makes us think that we're going to generate over nine million dollars? I just don't see that happening.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman.
My name is Richard Kaufman, I'm at the 1081 Wallace Lee. I don't know why I'm up here, it was all been said for you already. Mr. Block knows what he's talking about. And the only thing that I can, can repeat, will repeat is, what I learned today, when I confirmed some figures that I wanted to be sure before I made any comments. Let me back up a little bit. There have been a great number of personnel in the offices that have been so gracious to me, and they've been helpful to me, explaining things, and I want to express my thanks for them. I won't try to name them, they know who they are. But today, I confirmed with Marilyn Delugie that with this figure of a millage rate of twenty-two point one two seven four in this budget, and the one of last year of fifteen point nine nine four six, it means that the city is going to have to increase our property tax by six point one three two mils. That's a percent that was already stated of thirty-eight point three percent of increase in city taxes. That's too much for one year. I mean, maybe you let things go in the past, or whatever, but it's, it's just not real, realistic. I want to thank the commissioners who are speaking up so that I can hear, my hearing is very poor, and the, some of you, please bring your mic closer to you, or whatever, so you can help people like myself. Thank you for your time, Mary.
Thank you, sir.
Matthew forty-eight, 165 Floral Avenue. I'm not quite clear about how the Headley amendment will impact this millage increase. So, if anybody has any idea if and how it would impact the millage, I'd be interested in hearing.
The short answer on that is, the new millage rate that was authorized by the charter amendment would not be subject to the Headley rollback in year one, is what the explanation was by our auditing firm, our accounting firm that handles those kind of inquiries. The other things are not currently subject to it either, it's still, the level is still at point nine one three seven, for example, on the pension and on the dial-a-ride millages. So currently, we don't see any impact on the Headley rollback on any of our millages.
So basically, Headley didn't, wouldn't impact it at all?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a much more succinct way to put it. I must like to talk more, sorry. It's just no effect on anything that we have right now.
Right, because Headley wasn't directly planned to impact it originally, when it was passed.
Right.
What year was that, did it pass?
On the individual ones?
Headley.
Oh, Headley, I don't know.
Seventies.
It's been a long time. Seventy-eight, I think it is?
Okay.
Yeah. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's correct, nineteen seventy-eight.
And is there any other limitations that could be imposed on millages in general, as far as you know, for?
There's the proposal A limitations that come into play, there's Headley rollback, and then there's just the charter limitations that are in play in an individual community. So, those would be the three that I'd mention.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So the rollback would be a thing next year?
Could potentially be next year.
Potentially.
Right.
Potentially.
If you go through that, I'm sorry.
We haven't been subject to a Headley rollback in a little while, I don't think, so. But it could come into play next year, depending on what kind of circumstances we experience. But this year, no.
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I hope by now, some of you are, I know Mr. Raker finally, it's, the dawn has hit. We really went the wrong way when we went the property tax, we should have gone county income, or city income tax, because as I've said before, you've got a thirty-three million dollar county payroll. Just think, one half of one percent of that would be the minimum we could break up. You know, what's your problem with, and I've heard it all, and it's a bunch of misrepresented reasons for not having a city income tax. Oh, why it would just be so expensive to administer, ah, the state will collect it for you now. There goes that argument. And if you've got trouble with believing that it's going to work, I've got all twenty-three cities in the state that have an income tax, and with the exception of three being Flint, Pontiac, and Detroit, who just got down the drain with it, the rest of them will tell you what a boon it's been. You missed the boat, you should have done it. And I had several conversations before the vote, which, of course, I voted no, and wasn't a minority, and I was told clearly that that five percent, that five mils, was the wiggle rule. You didn't have to go up the whole five the first year. All of a sudden, boom, you're there. See, the problem with it is that rule that says, if I got money, I'll spend it, if I got time, I'll use it. And it's funny, you know how they talk about time expands to allow for the activity assigned to it? Well, money, expenses tend to grow depending on how much money is allotted for it. So the more money we give you, the more you can waste, which goes back to my statement in the other meeting, it is really time that we replay, we go back to pre-1954, we have a mayor, a city manager, get rid of the excess layer of government, and go to department heads as commissioners that are elected, then we will have a truly representative form of democracy. It's important, because you're not representing us. Most of you are representing your interests in the southwest quadrant, and the rest of us are hung out to dry. That's how this tax passed. Shame on all of you.
Laura Crop, fifteen Bellevue, resident, resident, business owner of 154 South Rose. In 2009 and 2010, this state saw a recession of obvious destitute, it was terrible, obviously. And I'm so frustrated right now, my vocabulary is limited, excuse me. It was a terrible time for everyone, and this city took a huge hit. A lot of businesses didn't make it. Our business, we laid off everyone but one person. And everyone has fought to try to make this city, and to bring back those businesses. And I believe we are on the upswing to some extent. And during those times, you came to the city, the citizens, and said, we need more money. The state keeps taking money from us, we need more money. And it took three election cycles, three, for you to get the trust of this community in order to pass that. And now, less than six months later, you're telling me a thirty-eight percent tax increase? We will have a mass exodus of residents and of business owners in this community, and for good reason, because shame on you. I understand, I understand that we have to have more money. We always feel like we have to have more money. My husband always wants another boat. Always. And I understand that sounds frivolous, but there's always another house, there's always something bigger we could do. But you aren't even doing the, some of the, some of the things that could be done to maximize the money that you have. And you're not using the resources that you have to do those things. And I think it's very, very unfortunate that people, that this is even an option. And I can't express my disappointment, and I hope, for everyone's sake in this community, that you'll reconsider.
I am so disappointed and frustrated with this commission as well. To go for the entire increase in one year is just, I can't even, it's a betrayal of our trust. And yes, Gloria, they, you did lie to us. You never said that you're going, you should have just said it right from the get-go. I can't get a freaking tree taken down on the freaking street without paying for it myself. I have invested so much money into this city. I have torn down empty houses that sat there for years, and all I hear from the city assessor is, it's worth ten grand. Go to the tribunal if you don't like it. There is, there is something critically wrong here. We entrusted you to represent us, citizens, in this city. You failed. You failed big time. I pay more taxes than, property taxes than, on pieces of property that I couldn't begin to sell for what you've got a assessed at. And now you're going to raise the blessed property tax rate to thirty-eight percent. You should all be ashamed of yourselves.
Anyone else like to be heard? If not, we'll take a mo, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing on the 2016 fiscal year proposed budget and the Headley millage rates.
Support.
Can we have some discussion on this issue amongst ourselves now?
Sure.
Obviously, there's some serious concerns as far as the increase in rate. We didn't have our third budget meeting for reasons unknown to me. My understanding that there are increases in pay for some individuals within the budget. I don't see how we can with any conscience even consider that. And so, that, and for also other reasons in regards to the DDA, last year, I didn't support the budget, I won't be supporting it as it's written either. But I want to start this conversation for this question here. We're having this public hearing, and if we have substantive changes to this budget, will that require an additional public hearing?
In order to have a change to what's presented, there would be, you know, a majority of commission would want to have, would have to want to have that happen. So however that comes about, if you want to have a scheduled, an additional meeting, that's an option. However that would need to happen, that would be the way that would work.
But if we agree on a substantive change to, other than what has been presented to the public, would we be required to have another public hearing? I would think that we would, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I'm saying that you, I'll let this finance director talk about it.
I'm not sure, actually, we'll have to refer back to Mike to have it looked into, because we've never had to have a second public hearing after we've made changes to the budget, because we've done it before, but we've done it before, we've had our public hearing. So we've never had anything like that afterwards.
I was referring to a work session, more than likely, not necessarily a public hearing.
Right. I think we need another workshop session to review this, and so I can provide you the information that you're looking for, like I did before, and then submit your, you know, your changes that you would like to see, and then we can put it into the budget, and then I'll recreate it and provide it to you for the workshop.
Okay, and that would not constitute a substantive change that would require? I guess, that's really my driving force here, is if we make, because we have this now, the public has had access to it, if we respond as representatives to the outcry of our constituents, and we make a substantive change, pardon me if I'm not saying that correctly, then that is, does that constitute a need to have an additional public hearing, because this is different?
The requirement for a public hearing is just that you have a single public hearing, we've met that requirement, there wouldn't be a need for a second public hearing, if the city attorney can correct me anytime he feels like it. That wouldn't be required. The only thing I'm saying would be required if you wanted to make particular changes that required, you know, the communication that a majority of the commission was in favor of that sort of a change, that would probably be in the context of a public meeting, like a work session, as opposed to a second public hearing, in my estimation. That would suffice. And keep in mind that the adoption of the budget would be scheduled at the second meeting in May, on May eighteenth, that's a public hearing, that's a public meeting. People in the audience would have an opportunity to discuss the budget at that time, make comment on the budget at that time. So there would be another opportunity for public comment and input at that time. I do not believe we would have to have a second public hearing, no.
Okay, what is the absolute latest that we have to have? I know this starts one July, but what is the absolute latest that we could approve this budget?
Well, actually, the charter says the second meeting in May, but we have had other budgets approved, like the first meeting, but the second meeting, by the end of June, we'd have to have the budget approved. Otherwise, we would have nothing July first.
Okay, so we have some, we have some time to play with. Some time to manage, maybe the better choice of words.
I have a question. Is anyone going to explain the questions that this gentleman had about the pension fund and all, because?
Yeah, Marilyn, do you want to address that?
Well, and we did discuss it, because there's several items that are involved in the retirement revenue that we take in. First part is that we do have a millage rate, point nine one three seven, and that was voted on years ago, and I'm not sure what year it was right to, right this minute, but that's a constant. And other than that, it is the stocks and bonds, the investment company itself, and how they invest, what they sell, what they buy. So there's many factors in this, there's realized gain, unrealized gain, so there's a lot of factors involved in this. And so for me to project, you know, our income, I kind of go on the basis of the last, you know, few years, what we've done, what we're looking at, and that's kind of how I've done it, because I really can't estimate in that well on the revenue by any means.
Don't we receive an actuarial report that tells us what contribution that the city needs to make to that pension system?
Yes, and that too, yes, too. We transfer funds from the general fund, from the various funds, actually, into the pension fund also. So there's a variety of issues that go into making that revenue, so.
There's retirements, there's retirements and resignations that impact the expense side of things, when people are taking out their contributions, if they've left before they qualify for a pension. There's people that do retire and qualify for a pension, when things start to come out, pay out of monies that have been paid in the system, that affect the balance of the expenditures and the revenues in that fund.
Can I say something? You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I am on the retirement board, and so I know a little bit about this. Part of the, we have been paying all of the pensions, and I think all of our retirees are well taken care of. The problem is that about two or three years ago, the state required that we start prefunding the pension fund, and that means that there was hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had to pre-fund the pension fund with. And if, and if you don't pre-fund it, the state considers that a deficit. And that's what we've been dealing with the last couple of years, and
And so our attempt now is to pay back some of that pre-funding so that we're, we're considered to be in a better financial situation and the city can borrow money if we need to, et cetera. Now, did I say that right or not? Okay.
Any questions on this side?
What are, how are our investments going right now? How have they been functioning for the city?
For the retirement fund?
Yeah.
They're doing well. They're holding, you know, they're basically, as of the end of March, they are, like you stated, 4.1 million. Each month, I get a statement from Comerica, so I know what our stocks and what we're taking in. I do the statement every month. So it just depends also on what the company invests in, what they sell. You know, there's a variety of things that go into it that, you know, I don't get involved in. I don't get involved in the purchases or any of that.
I guess my feeling was is that it has been doing very well.
Yes.
It's been doing better than the average market.
We're actually 95 percent funded in the retirement fund.
That's what I was trying to get to, so that people knew that point.
Yep, the actuary report stated we were 95 percent funded, which is excellent.
When, when the stock market and our investments are doing well, which they are right now, it, it, it funds most of the pension fund. But back in 2008, when there was a drop in the stock market, it wasn't paying everything. And so we had to pay more out of the general fund to fund all the pensions. So, but now that the stock market and all is doing better.
And actually, too, they smooth, in the actuarial, it smoothes out over a five-year period. So that loss that we had, that back a few years ago, has now come off this year. So we no longer have the loss in there, but it's smoothed out to where what the city has to put into the retirement fund.
I guess I have another thing that I would like to bring up, and that's the salary issue I heard mentioned. And our people have been working for a long time without salary raises, haven't they not?
Yes.
And not only that, they have had additional responsibilities placed on them, so they're doing more for the same pay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any other, any other questions, Commissioner?
I, I think it's important to point out that we are not voting on the approval of the budget for 2016 tonight. This was just the public hearing. The commission will, will vote on approving or, 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 you know, disproving or adopting or not adopting the budget on the May, on May 18th. Okay? So if in the next two weeks, you have additional comments that you want to make, or you have additional information that you need, you know, you feel you need, you need to contact Marilyn, or City Manager Brown, or any of us. But there, but we are not voting on adoption of this budget tonight. I think that there just seems a little confusion there.
Okay.
I just want to readdress that thing about the salaries. I don't want to get into an argument or anything like that. But truth of the matter is, how many of you have worked for five years, 10 years, or whatever, and not gotten any kind of an increase or any kind of, what they add? Okay, then they add, they add more work to your load and you just keep getting paid. Okay. Well, I guess then our people are just going to stay overworked and underpaid.
I understand.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Don't we have to close the public?
We already did.
I would, I disagree with the point of border there. I mean, I think that if there's still discussion to be had on this item, it would be healthy unless you want to have a vote to call, to, to close discussion on this item. I mean, I don't, I don't think unilaterally you can just.
No, you just ask if anybody had any more.
I thought there was, I thought, I thought she just.
I ask, I ask you if you had any other comments.
Pardon me, I thought.
These are comments for the commission, not the audience. They've already had their opportunity to speak.
I, I still actually had a couple more comments. I apologize. I thought, I thought you had one too. I could swear I saw your arm up.
Well, I, I don't know.
All right, you get one and you get one. Then we're going to move on.
I, I didn't really think that we had discussed raising salaries so much. We did talk about increasing the rental inspector from part-time to full-time. And we talked about bringing another person in, in the human resources department because we've been a person short there, essentially. So I, I don't remember any discussions about raising salaries, actually.
Commissioner Recker?
I'm, I think Commissioner Button did a great job qualifying the fact that we do have employees that have taken on more. But that is the unfortunate circumstances that a lot of us have been in. My objective in the way this was characterized, even though I did not support this going on the ballot, and I did support the option of a potential income tax through that revenue working meeting that never really got to see the light of day. I, I think that, I mean, I find it equally as frustrating as my, as my constituents here, but I think it's unconscionable that we had characterized this as a, a continuation of necessary services, and then we turn around and invoke any sense of increased pay compensation. That was not how this was characterized last year, and I think to capitalize on, on this opportunity is, is not fair to the public.
Thank you.
I'll just say this, you know, we can, last comment, true. We can lose a lot of good people in a lot of good positions if we don't at least make them think that their efforts are worthwhile. So if that's the feeling that everybody has that we shouldn't pay, that's fine, but I just want to let us know that there are valuable people who have had a lot of experience and working, and they may seek other places, but it's all good. Moving on.
Agenda item 9B, moving right along. Introduction to first reading of an ordinance to amend provisions of the Fire Code Ordinance 40.000. Mr. Manager?
Oh, we need a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of the amendment to the Fire Code Ordinance and set May 18th, 2015, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Support. Mr. Manager? The city currently utilizes the 2006 edition of the International Fire Code as the Fire Code of Mount Clemens. The 2006 edition has been replaced by the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code, and therefore, it's necessary to amend the Fire Code Ordinance 40.00 to reflect the same. And this is submitted by Michael Murray, our city attorney, and Captain Greg Shipman of the Fire Department.
Any questions, any concerns?
Go ahead, ladies first.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Can someone explain briefly what the difference is, what, what the changes are from 2006 to what we're about to adopt now?
And the entire International Fire Code? No.
Well, I mean, what, you know, I saw some changes in, you know, violation fees and...
Basically, we adopt the International, like a lot, most municipalities, we adopt by reference the International Fire Code. The addition we, in our ordinance, and then we reference it in the ordinance. The code has been updated in 2012. So the amendment basically is, is to reflect that we're now utilizing the 2012 edition instead of the 2006 edition. So any of the changes encompassed in that code, we are now utilizing.
Okay, well, I just thought for the benefit of the public, we might like to say what changes might be involved, but.
Well, there's a multitude of them, and Captain Shipman would be far better prepared. You know, it's, it's essentially hazardous substances, things of that nature, different definitions, they've expanded them. There's a whole myriad of things that are, that are changing.
But to characterize it, it's more along the lines of a housekeeping administrative measure that we're taking. We're not making some drastic sweeping changes to the fire code. We're just simply taking the necessary steps to stay current with how regulations are worded. That's basically it, I think.
Fair summation.
There we go. Little call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
Button.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, 9.
C.
Boy, that's a long code. Okay, 9D.
Same.
9C. 9C. Oh, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend provisions of the Fire Code Ordinance 40.050.
Move to approve the introduction and first reading of amendment to the Fire Prevention Code Ordinance and set May 18th, 2015, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
So this is a similar item where the city currently utilizes Boca National Fire Prevention Code 9th Edition 1993. It's as Fire Prevention Code, the 2012 edition of the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA, NFPA 1, the Fire Prevention Code, along with the 2012 edition of the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code. And all appendices have replaced the Boca Fire Protection Code, and it is therefore necessary to amend the City Fire Prevention Code Ordinance 40.050 to reflect the same. So again, consistent with the last item, it's reflecting current status of the items that we base our, our work on here in the city of Mount Clemens.
More housekeeping. Any other questions or concerns? Little call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Flash.
Yes.
Button.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, item 9D, request city commission approval of a contract for utilities department management. Need a motion?
I move, go ahead. I move to enter into a professional services agreement for day-to-day management and oversight of the utilities department with F and V operations and resource management for one year on a not-to-exceed basis with an option to extend as approved by the city commission and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement as finalized by the city attorney.
Need a support?
Support. So in terms of the cover memo, city administration's taken several steps to fill the vacancy in our utilities director position, which was created by the retirement of the prior incumbent. These steps have included a hiring search as well as investigation of various contractual alternatives for providing day-to-day management oversight and direction of our wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, and the associated collection and distribution function. We conducted a request for qualifications or RFQ process for management services related to your utilities department. As a result, the RFQ, city administration is recommending F and V operations and resource management, hereafter referred to as FVOP, as our preferred respondent, and discussions with FVOP on the provision of those services were held. We're recommending that we finalize a professional services agreement with FVOP for day-to-day management and oversight of our utilities department. The agreement will reflect an hourly equivalent rate and a not-to-exceed cost. The hours and cost can be reduced as conditions and progress warrant. Additional information is attached to this agenda item. It includes information from prior packages that was provided in the past, as well as a new cover memo dated April 30th, 2015, from my office on the latest set of questions that came out of our last meeting. At the commission's preference, I can go over that cover memo, or I'll let you just discuss what you would like to discuss.
Any questions or concerns? Commissioner Recker?
I believe Commissioner Bla, Pro-Tan Flash, pardon me, he made the insightful suggestion to go back to them, and obviously, they are not interested in the scale, scaling down the contract.
I would correct that and say it wasn't that they were not interested. They, they offered up an alternative that allows us to scale it as we see fit.
Oh, okay.
So they've, they basically took their, their base price, which was quoted on a per-month basis, which equaled out to a per-year cost, and basically agreed to go ahead and turn that into an hourly rate that we can then use to, to use any set of hours from what's recommended to below that or above that, if we ever decided that was appropriate. So they've made the offer to, to basically turn it into an hourly rate equivalent and then let us scale it as we need it. So initially, my memo references the fact that I would recommend that we start off with what they're quoting as a hourly, or excuse me, a monthly level of effort, which is just north of 40 hours per week. And that's from their entire team. It won't be with one employee. It will be provided through a group of employees that would be provided by FVOP. And my recommendation would be to start off at that, that level of service that they quoted in their proposal, as was discussed with city administration. And then as things progress, in other words, there are issues that are in play without having a, a set of technical management in place over the last year's period of time. It's my representation that there are some, some issues in play in terms of our operations. There are issues in play in our operations that have, you know, persist from whatever practices we've had over the years. They would provide an independent set of eyes to take a look at that and provide management direction for that function and come up with new ways of doing business that potentially in the long run, once they're implemented, could reduce their effort going forward. So in other words, I'd start off at a certain level. My recommendation is that we start off at that certain level that was proposed in their, in their proposal and in the agreement that we would negotiate. And then potentially, as things go forward and benefits are realized and things are improved in our operation, employees are taking on additional responsibilities as they become familiar with the new processes that might come into play, we could reduce the hourly effort that we would require of them, and based on that, the, that hourly rate would be applied to a lower set of hours and reduce our cost. I was just uncomfortable with putting a, a figure on it at this point in time of, you know, 30 hours, 35 hours, 20 hours, 25 hours at this point in time. I thought that we would really realize the benefit of a, of a full 40-plus hours of effort that they quoted initially, and then have the opportunity to bring it down from there once we have a good experience, hopefully in the future.
Mr. Campbell.
Was any proposals put forth to talk with our former utilities director regarding what he thought, or any collaboration with Clinton Township regarding this?
Yeah, initially, we had some discussions with, with Clinton Township on that front about whether that would be something that could make sense from an availability standpoint, from a legal standpoint. And my discussions with them reached a point where there was, you know, they didn't exactly move forward at a high rate of speed, but after some discussion back and forth, basically, they were concerned there might be some legal issues in play with that, that they would have to do some further exploration on. And that more or less was pretty close in time period with my initial recommendation that I was bringing forward to go with a management company to begin with. So we kind of let those talks fall off at that point in time when they had some issues potentially on the legal side of things that they were going to need to explore, and I was going to bring forward a management company recommendation for the mayor and commission's consideration. So yes, there was discussions. They didn't really proceed to the point where I could bring anything back on a firm basis that yes, this could make sense, or no, that did not make sense. They were sort of suspended, is how I would put it, because of those two issues that I just raised.
I mean, was the cost effectiveness there to further explore it, or?
It never really got to that point. As I said, there was some questions about whether they felt that legally it was going to work out, and whether that would be something that could work. I mean, realistically, you know, if you have an employee that's under your employ and you're sort of subcontracting them to someone else, there might be some legal ramifications that I think they became aware of and were concerned with. And we basically mutually agreed that we would suspend it at that time, and I proceeded down the management contract path.
Clinton Township said that there was legal.
There was discussion between us on that, yes.
And they recommended against it?
I, no, I didn't say that. I just said that they brought up those concerns, and they weren't ready to commit to it at that time. And they were going to have to do some addition, some additional work in terms of determining what exactly their position was. And that, I said, kind of coincided with my decision to go ahead and move forward with the management contract. And again, going back to the, you know, regardless of, if, if we had a situation where we brought back somebody that was a full-time employee with someone else, you're going to be looking at somebody that's making far less than a full-time effort to manage an operation that's critical to the city. We had a utilities director in place in the past that was full-time. We had a utilities director that was in place in the past that was the highest compensated employee at the city. Other than the city manager, he was the highest compensated department head because that department warranted, warranted that kind of an investment. It's my position that this department continues to warrant that kind of full-time effort investment, whether it be with an internal employee or whether it be through a management contract. I'm recommending a management contract. But I think if you try to get away with less than a full-up, full, full-time effort on that, I think you're going to perpetuate the situation we're in right now, which is inadequate management. And I don't want to do that. It's not my recommendation to do that. It's up to the mayor and commission to make the decision what they want to do, mind you. My recommendation is to bring in a management company on a full-time basis initially and see if we can ratchet down the effort in the long run. But in the short run, I think it's warranted to make that investment with a management company at the rate that was quoted. My recommendation is to bring in a management company on a full-time basis initially and see if we can ratchet down the effort in the long run, but in the short run, I think it's warranted to make that investment with a management company at the rate that was quoted on a full-time basis.
This proposal is, is a one-year proposal with the possibility of renewing, is the intent that we train someone during that period of time that can actually manage these departments.
Right. Right now, that's, that's something that this, this management company recommended, and that was unsolicited, they recommended that on their own, that they would be looking to cross-train employees. So people that work in our water plant would get experience with walking, working in our wastewater plant and vice versa, as well as in the collection and distribution function, with the idea being that that's beneficial to the city in terms of when we have somebody that's out for an extended period of time, we have somebody else that can take over those responsibilities. So from the city's standpoint, that cross-training is beneficial from, from that standpoint, and, and allows us to, to have employees with a higher, more diverse skill set in all of those functions as opposed to a single function. But from the employee's standpoint, they also have the opportunity to cross-train in those functions. The city's requirements in the licensing side of things, there's four different licenses that the city has required for this function in the past. Our current employees at most have two of those licenses, and most of them have one. The management employees currently mostly have one, one has two, the second one being the most, the, the least experienced requirement and the, the easiest to obtain license. So we've got people that only have one, maybe two licenses in place currently. When our desire is to have somebody that has all four licenses, that cross-training will allow the employees that are currently on staff to get cross-trained and to gain the experience that's required, which is four years on all of these licensing requirements, four years of experience is required. So it's my perception of the benefit here for the, from the employee's standpoint is the opportunity to cross-train, gain that experience on a day-to-day basis, doing the work in these other fields of endeavor, and they would have the opportunity to pursue the schooling and the licensing requirements that would be in play for those other licenses, and one day potentially have the possibility of becoming a, a new utilities director for the city of Mount Clemens.
You said, the requirement's four years of experience, are we anticipating doing this for four years?
That would be up to the city, I mean, you know, depends on, you know, if, if we're A, happy with the management company experience and, and the particular management company that we're proposing. You know, there, there's a, a one-year contract is what they're proposing, there's a thirty-day out under that contract, so if either party decides it's not working out, then we can exercise an out within thirty days, actually. That's what's currently proposed and potentially could be included in the, in the service agreement. But it's proposed for a one-year period of time, and then we would evaluate from there whether it was something we wanted to continue. Hypothetically, you know, you could make a move to have somebody that has begun to gain the experience to continue to gain the experience in a different level as an overall manager of the entire operation just as well. That's, to my understanding, the experience that took place with Chuck Bellmore. Chuck Bellmore did not start the position with a full set of licenses either, but over a period of time gained the experience and, and gained the licenses. So that's, that's an approach we could choose to, to implement currently or after we've had the benefit of having a management company come in here and, and bring the level of performance up in the function.
It's my understanding that we have three employees that have this licensure. Right now, we have somebody that's a chief operator at the wastewater, or at the water filtration plant that has the F-one certification. We have somebody at the wastewater treatment plant that has the Class A certification, and we have somebody at the, it's the crew leader that has the S-two certification. I, I think these guys have been handling this quite well for the last year. They're, and, and I'm kind of concerned here, the, the comments about the utilities director was the highest compensated department head, well, you know what? We can do without a finance director for a month, two months, we can do without a, a DPW director, we can do without a city manager for a few months, but we cannot do without a water department manager. And I think that we have failed in, in, in how we have approached this, because when we posted that job and, and we posted that salary at less than eighty thousand dollars, you're, you're not going to get a, a highly skilled, trained person with two or more certificates or licenses at eighty thousand dollars. And I think that if we have an option to continue the discussions with Clinton Township, because as far as I'm aware, I talked to Mr. Bellmore, and Mr. Bellmore is confused why the conversation has not continued. So I would prefer that we either post it with a better salary and attract other, you know, other candidates, or we go and have a continued conversation with Clinton Township.
Mr. Brown, you're, you're gonna probably get a lot of heat for this, but I think you have overall managed this very well as far as bringing options to us or whatnot. I can't say that I am in agreement, I cannot say that I am in agreement, but I do like your conviction in where you're going. However, as I read through this, and, and I didn't read in detail, because I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure I'm gonna vote against this, but I did ask specifically for kind of a cost analysis between drafting up, trying to train in-house as opposed to this contract, and I don't necessarily see a direct correlation, kind of a narrative, am I correct in that?
The, the cost numbers that I came up with, probably about two thousand dollars enough to train somebody in the short run to the long run, depending on decisions that the city would make. There's certain, like, you know, boot camp type of things that come into play on these kind of things that are very information-intensive and very expensive. If you go that route, I think you're gonna see something far north of two thousand dollars, but it's not something that's gonna be, you know, north of ten or fifteen thousand dollars, it's just gonna be north of two thousand dollars. So those costs are in there, but they're pretty modest overall, and that's what my point was, if you're looking to compare the costs of training somebody to that level and compare that to the management company, the costs are not gonna approach anywhere near the difference.
Right, but, but in this, it doesn't have a direct comparison, correct?
A direct comparison?
Yeah.
I didn't know what you, I thought you were only looking on the training cost, if you're talking about the cost of an employee, it's dependent on.
Yeah, I know there's some variables, but I was, no worries, I, I think you made a decent attempt at it. I just think that if we do have the opportunity to potentially, I mean, I mean, you can even call it the Bellmore plan for all I care, because if he was raised in-house and he acquired those certifications, he obviously would know how to groom the next successor. And quite honestly, I mean, looking back, that is something that probably should have been occurring over the years, and for whatever reason, that did not occur. Hindsight's twenty-twenty, but I think especially in the current discussions, or I should say, public hearing we just had in regards to the budget, I do see some value in what you're proposing. However, given the financial situation we're in, I, I, I can't justify supporting it.
I would like to say that Chuck Bellmore has continued, he's a, he's a city resident, and Chuck has continued to assist the water, the wastewater treatment and the distribution plant with needs. They, the crew leader talks to him on, on almost a weekly basis. Anytime that there has been an emergency or a situation in, in, in one of the three departments, Chuck Bellmore has come back to the city and helped. And his reason is, is because he drinks the water, too. He drinks the water, too. So we have a man that is highly skilled, highly trained, his, the, the employees at the three plants have nothing but wonderful and good things to say about him. And if we can bring him back, even on a, on a time and material basis charged to Clinton Township, then that's where I would like to go.
Not to, not to kill the level of work that you've done here, but what is, if we were to go back and revisit this additional option, what is the shelf life of the FVOP offer here?
I've had discussions with them whether there was any concerns about what's, what's happened up to this point, there's never been any issue about, we're gonna go away mad, so to speak, you know, that's not anything that is, been expressed by them as being a likely outcome at all. I don't know if eventually it would get to that point after a period of time, I have no idea. There are situations when companies are trying to pursue this kind of an opportunity where you have people on staff, that you bring on staff for a specific opportunity, and to the extent that that opportunity doesn't materialize, sometimes that staffing can, can no longer be available. I haven't had that, I'm not raising that as a, as a threat, just as a potential reality. There's never been any discussion on that front from FVOP that, you know, I have to have an answer by this date or that date or the other date. You know, I don't know if we'll get to that point, if we have additional delay, I don't have any clue, that would be something I would have to ask them directly, but up until now, it's not been an issue, is all I can say.
My, my suggestion is that, I'm kind of reading the room a little bit, and I can't say how everyone's going to vote, but if this ties, it dies. So I would like to demonstrate a certain level of, of concern to the FVOP in their offer by showing some discretion, by not voting it down right away and maybe potentially pursuing this collaborative initiative with Mr. Bellmore or with Clinton Township, or even potentially reissuing the posting, if we do a little deeper dive as to what the going rate is. I think, I, I just don't want to jump into spending seventeen thousand dollars a month for this contract. But if you exhaust those options, you basically have really done a yeoman's job in getting to where it needs to be then, and I will, you'll have my support then.
I, I'm at the discretion of the mayor and commission here, whatever they want to do, so.
I'd just like to bring up a, a little different point of view. When I read what the company said that they're going to do, they said, they listed several things, overall direction and supervision of our utilities functions, development of a capital improvement plan, including an asset inventory, improvement of the computer maintenance management program, review of laboratory operations and subsequent technical support and expertise, comprehensive evaluation of operational and/or maintenance issues and direction for addressing identified issues, added and much-needed attention to basic maintenance, housekeeping, and improvement of the physical plants, making up our operations, recommendations and direction regarding basic staffing, cross-training, and training in general, including safety training for our employees, review and update of existing emergency response procedures. Now, I think that there is some benefit to having an objective outside group of experts look at our plant and make some recommendations. We know that we have some issues regarding capital improvements that are going to have to be made in a few years. This is a very important asset, it needs to be well-managed and taken care of. The main disadvantage to this is the cost of it. And personally, I, I would not approve this kind of cost for longer than one year. I think if you have somebody come in, objectively look at it, deal with what needs to be dealt with, that, you know, it might be worthwhile, even though it's expensive. Now, the other thing I wanted to bring up is that somewhere in all of this material, there was a letter from this management company saying that if we responded within two hundred and seventy days, I think it was, that they would knock fifteen thousand dollars off the price. And I, I don't know if we're within that two hundred and seventy days or not, but I think we are, because I think that letter was written in March. And so, you know, it can't, it can't be more than, you know, half the time that's passed, so I just wanted to bring that up.
That provision will probably be in the final contract, and it'll run from the date the contract is signed, so I wouldn't be too concerned about March.
Oh, okay. So that's just another point of view.
I'm gonna take a moment. My feelings have not changed since the last time we addressed this. The dollar amount involved in contracting with this company is, is a big number. And, and as I explained to the manager when we spoke, all of the things, there isn't anybody here on staff, in-house, that has the expertise to be able to evaluate whether we're getting our money's worth or not. None of us have that expertise. And for us to just, you know, throw that, that kind of money at this management company, as I expressed the last time, for them to be out there forty hours a week, and, and I'm, my question was, what are we getting for forty hours? That they couldn't do in twenty hours at half the cost? Because it's, they're managing, they're not physically doing anything. That's my concern.
What if we agreed to hire them for, let's say, two months or three months at the price they're asking, and then agree to cut the time in half?
Well, again, and, and manager Brown has, has said to us in, in our, in our agenda item here, that the agreement will reflect an hourly equivalent rate and has to exceed cost, and that, that could be amended going forward. So he would want to start out with forty hours a week, or a month, or two months, and maybe we could ratchet it down to thirty hours or down to twenty hours going forward, but there's no guarantee. And there isn't anybody, as I said, on staff that could look at this company and say, look, we don't need you for your forty hours a week, we need you twenty hours a week. Because, as I explained to the manager, there isn't anybody on this board, and, and the manager doesn't have the expertise to evaluate whether or not this company is giving us what it is that we think they're giving us.
Well, one way that it could be evaluated is by visiting and seeing what's going on, because Mr. Brown did visit, I guess, a couple of times or a few times, and was not real happy with what was going on, and the appearance and et cetera. And so, I mean, you know, that's one way you can evaluate it, is to look and see.
And that may be true, but I mean, do we need to employ somebody for a twelve-month period just to have them come in and do some housecleaning?
Well.
The list you just read was a little more than housecleaning.
No, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true, but.
It, just from the, the, the technical nature of the correct, I, I don't have a, an F-one license, I don't have an S-one license, et cetera. But I do, you know, have the ability to see what's going on in terms of our current operations and what's going on in terms of what the future operations look like. I think we'll have some capacity to determine if we're getting some benefit for the money that we're expending, and I don't make any, I, I'm, I do not quibble with the fact that this is a substantial investment in the service compared to what we currently invest for that level of management. And even in comparison to what we were investing when we had Chuck Bellmore on staff, it is substantially an increase in cost. One thing I will point out right now, too, just, just to soften the cost side of things a little bit, you know, we, we've agreed to pay existing staff a, a certain amount of money because of the licenses that we're utilizing for day-to-day operations. Where in the past, we had Chuck Bellmore that had those licenses from an overall management perspective. That kind of cost is gonna go away underneath a management contract, because they're gonna have the, the same set of licenses provided by their team. So we are gonna experience a pretty substantial reduction in our current operating costs compared to, to what we, we have right now. So that is something I'll point out, I don't want to get into, you know, specific dollar amounts or anything, but it's north of forty thousand dollars, that is gonna be a reduction, so.
Are there any, currently, are there any water quality control concerns?
Not up until this point, no, there has not been anything like that, we, we are continuing with the testing that we do.
And the same with the discharge?
Correct.
From wastewater.
Yeah, we had, we've had an issue on that front recently that was related to contractor, contractor performance essentially, and it's something that has happened in the past when we had Chuck Bellmore on staff as well. So it's something that we have had and experienced with recently, but that's being, being handled by virtue of getting the, the contractor to, you know, there was this, the same issue that we experienced when we were talking about demolitions and things of that nature, frost laws, that there was some, some issues with how we disposed of, certain of our product that came through our wastewater treatment processes that couldn't happen until the weather cleared. That weather clear has taken place, and that, that issue has been resolved. So that's, that's an isolated incident where we had some issues, that's not something that's gonna be happening going forward, though, that's been resolved.
If, if given another, if given another two weeks to explore the options that Commissioner Mensah brought up and the, and the Commissioner Raker brought up, is that going to hamper anything with, with this FVOP?
If, the commission isn't, is inclined to, to delay for an additional two weeks or whatever the case may be, what I would say is, and, and I've initiated some recent. recent contact with, with Clinton Township to try to revisit the subject that, that was discussed today, I just didn't get anywhere in that, that contact effort, um, 'cause the notice wasn't, was kinda close to today's meeting. So, I haven't had those additional discussions, I can continue to pursue those additional discussions with Clinton Township, find out what their level of interest is. Um, if there is any level of interest from their standpoint in, in terms of sharing the employee or providing an employee to subcontract with the City of Mount Clemens, find out what kind of hourly commitment might be in play, what kinda cost might be in play. I can try to do some due diligence on that front and see if we can get somewhere, uh, unlike last time, and come up with some kind of an idea of what the availability would be and what the cost would be, and then have that as an additional consideration to compare to this management contract, um, either by the eighteenth or at the first of June, to however long it might take.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
I would yield to Commissioner Raker, who had his hand up first.
I would consider, I would suggest you considering taking a month so that-
Yep.
...the discussions aren't hurried.
That's why I mentioned June.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a better idea, and plus, we can focus. Well, unfortunately, I think this is kind of, would this be reflective in the budget that we're currently discussing?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that can be modified after the budget's adopted, to the extent that reality has changed, so we can, we can address that.
But it sounds like ideally, the way to manage this item is to either delay the vote one month, or, uh, and just leave it at that, without having to take any vote on anything. I think it would send a good message to this company that we're doing our due diligence and we're not writing off this as an option. By voting it down inadvertently in a tie, or outright, I think they're not gonna waste too much more time with you.
Uh, just for a quick comment on both of those, I would advocate that we probably have a study session in advance of the next commission meeting, so that we can go over this before the, the, the actual commission meeting, um, whether it be at the first of June, or whether it be at May eighteenth. Um, and I can do that based on the experience that I have in trying to come up with the answers that we're seeking here. Um, and then, secondly, I think we do, we'd probably have to have a motion to table.
A motion.
To our parliamentarian here, if that's, uh, something he'd weigh in on.
One minute.
Before, I would like to get my comment. Since Mr. Bellmore has been cited as being an expert, has he taken a look at this proposal from, uh, the company, and what does he think of it? And I think that would be something that he could do actually outside of the confines of Clinton Township, uh, if he could take a look at it and give us, uh, his opinion of an evaluation on it, as well as, as we negotiate, perhaps, that he can come in and help. So, I, I, both of those could be on the table.
Yeah, it's something I could pursue potentially. Um, we've had it looked at by our, by our on-staff, um, experts, if you will. AEW staff, uh, has, has vetted it. Um, our city attorney has vetted it. Um, I've done a lotta work in comparing it with other, uh, agreements of a like type. Um, so, I think we've done a pretty good job on the due diligence there, and I, and I talked with, I probably have talked in the past about this, I'm not sure, but one of the key considerations when you're going through a management contract like this is you need to make sure you do an excellent job on the contract, so that you get the services that you want covered in the proposal, so that there's no issue with add-on costs after the fact. And I'm, I'm pretty satisfied that we've done a, done a very good job of getting that taken care of. Another set of eyes wouldn't be outside of the realm of possibility, we can take a look at that.
I just wanna point out that you stated that there have been no water quality issues, and I think that that's because our employees are hardworking, loyal, and dedicated, and they're good at what they do, and I think that that needs to be recognized.
I, I believe the correct way forward then would be for-
Make the motion to table it.
Make the motion to table it, or would it be a substitute motion by the person who initially made the motion? That's, I think, would be more correct. Tabling technically is, is a parliamentary term that we use, actually incorrectly, so, um-
What do you think, Mr. Attorney?
I would table it.
That's fine, it's splitting hairs, but, okay, fine.
And I prefer not to, don't table it to a date certain, just table it, and let me bring it back as we-
I would table this to a later date at the discretion of the city manager.
Okay, right. I'm also gonna do a support.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Direct the city manager to provide a budget book to the fire department. Need a motion?
Motion to direct the city manager to provide the fire department with a budget book each fiscal year during the budget process, beginning with the fiscal year 2016 budget book.
Second.
Uh, cover memo, prior city practice has been to provide budget books to the mayor and commissioners, city manager, and department heads only. Uh, the purpose of this motion is to direct the city manager to provide one fiscal year 2016 budget book to the fire department for their use and review, and that the city manager continue this practice for future budget books as well.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your peripheral vision's on you.
Yeah. I asked for the fire department to have a budget book, so that I could sit down with them and discuss equipment, uh, things that they need. If you remember last September, um, all departments supplied a spreadsheet of needs. And there are some things, some equipment in there, some things that I didn't understand, and so, I wanted to sit down with one of the captains and go over the book and ask questions. When I asked for that budget book to be supplied, um, the, uh, the, the request was denied. Um, I wanna point out that in the memo that was handled, you know, handed to us, um, from Mr. Brown on the thirtieth, um, as far as I'm concerned, it, it, it's contradictory and confusing. I requested the budget book for the fire department. The fire department, none of the captains requested that. So, in this memo, communicating to the fire captains that this request should've come to me, uh, directly, um, and chastising for that, I think was, was inappropriate. Um, it, this is information that we've provided in the public, this is on our website. There's a budget book, although I understand it may be missing a few pages, on the county and the, uh, counter in the clerk's office. This budget was put together by the three captains and submitted to Mr. Brown with some discussion afterwards. Now, item nine B and nine C on this very agenda tonight is put together by Captain Shipman. Um, I don't see any good reason not to supply our employees with information about the budgets that affect their department, when they are in effect acting as a department head.
Commissioner Hill. With all due respect, I, I don't see that as your job to discuss with the fire department. If the fire department wants to have a budget discussion, they should have it with Mr. Brown.
Yes. I disagree with you. If I wanna learn and understand about items in the budget, whether it's with the fire department or any other department, I should have that freedom.
Well, why didn't you take your budget book over there and talk to them?
You know what? That would be really, that would've been a really easy matter. But you know what? I would like them to have a budget book, so that I could sit on the other side of the table, and we could both look at the same thing at the same time. I could've taken this to Kinko's and copied it, but I sup- I wanted to be above board and upfront with it. This, hiding this information from departments because they don't have a, a department head title after their names, it does not meet the standards for transparency. And it, this is not an employee-related issue. This is a budget and numbers issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, again, I say that if the, if the fire department wants to discuss their budget, they should discuss it with Mr. Brown. He is the city manager.
And he's their department head.
Yes.
And I did have a meeting with the fire department before the, the budget submission was finalized, uh, for the record.
Yeah, I said that.
Fine.
I talked to the city manager about this, I said, "This is completely ridiculous that we're even having this conversation." I mean, everybody gets a budget book, it's no secret. There's a budget book sitting up at the circulation, the check-in desk there. It's not a question of stepping out of line and who's discussing what and everything like this. It's a book that everybody has, because he doesn't have the title "department head", this is stupid. Give a book, and let's move on. This is not a big deal. This is information that everybody has. So, I don't see why we're even having this conversation.
But it's not Denise's job-
I didn't say it was Denise's.
It's the, it's the-
It's the fact that the fire department gets a book, just should get a book, just like anybody else. This is not a big deal. Because he doesn't rank as a department head, a book's not being put out. Every department should get one.
We have, we have one sitting commissioner who's asking this body to act as one on the, on the, at the, at the, uh, crap. Searching for a word.
Can we come back?
Now, but we're being asked to direct the city manager, as a body, to give a budget book to one group of employees. Not all of them, just one group. That's not our function. As we are policymakers, we, we walk that fine line between setting policy and micromanaging. And we don't wanna find ourselves on the micromanaging side of that line. And you're asking all of us to potentially step over that line, and that's not fair. Just because we don't feel like you, that's not fair to ask us to do that.
She shouldn't have pets. We, we provide that information to other groups of employees.
Who, who requested this, this book? I mean, is it, uh, I mean, I guess, who's the book supposed to be for? Were the fire chief, is it, is it his directive that he wants this book?
No.
I asked for the budget book to be provided, one budget, budget book in its entirety to the three captains to share.
Is it not available, if they, if they need any information from any part of that book, that they could come up and, and, uh, look at it here, or use, uh, since you're in close contact with them, use yours? I mean, what, what I see here is that we are crossing the fine line, as Commissioner or Pro-Tim, uh, Gary Blash has said, that we're crossing the line between management and, and policymaking. Our attorney has provided a concise and detailed, uh, brief that says that we are indeed encroaching the, uh, management area. Um, I think that that should also be considered. If our attorney thinks and, and has shown in several cases where we are not following a sta- a goods procedure, then I think we really need to put this aside.
Commissioner Raker.
Uh, I think this comes down to more along the lines of the spirit of what we're trying to do. I think we're all trying to make a better product here, as far as a better budget, better representation. Uh, I don't think that with the explanation in, from the, it's kinda, it's not, it's not what Commissioner Mensah is doing, and it's not that she's trying to micromanage, and it's not exactly a characterization of what's in that memo. I talk to our employees, and you're not gonna stop me. But I don't micromanage the city manager by my conversations with our employees. Being made aware of what's going on, I don't think is not micromanaging. Uh, I think in some cases, it can be useful if you have a good communication with the city manager. In this case, the fire department is a very large portion of our budget, and coincidentally, we have people that are functioning as department heads in a department head's absence. Um, I certainly don't wanna bear the cost of putting a department head over the fire department. However, comma, I'll buy the dang budget book for them right now. I mean, it's not, it's not that big of a deal, and quite honestly, if you want to give every employee one, as far as I'm concerned, that's okay, too. Um, but the fire department is a major portion of our budget, and so, um, whether you think that it's not a, uh, you know, we're overstepping our bounds or not, I don't think that's the spirit of what we're trying to do, though I do get the message you're trying to send, um, I don't, I don't take it as being micromanagement in, in nature. And I, I would, I would go farther to not necessarily amend the motion, but that, because we did have a very good discussion, a productive discussion on other items today, and I don't want this necessarily to go sideways, I, I think that the spirit of this is, is more inclusiveness and, and more transparency, and, and if we can walk away with that understanding from this, I would appreciate it, as, instead of like drawing the line down the middle and saying, uh, and saying that Commissioner Mensah is wrong, 'cause I don't believe she's wrong, and really cast a vote on this as a split vote, or a, or a no vote, is gonna send the public the wrong message as well, so, that's my comments.
I just believe that Marilyn Delugia is more qualified to discuss any item in the budget whatsoever. I think that our, um, city manager, Steve Brown, is better prepared to talk to anybody about any part of our budget. Uh, they are the experts, and there's no reason for anybody who is not an expert to be sitting down with anyone else and, and going over this, unless they have the experts available for them. Uh, the budget is available. It is, uh, it's, it's not a secret, there, there's no reason that if they have a concern about any part of that budget book, they can come up here and take a look at it. Uh, it, it's available. It's avail- it was on, is online, as I understand it. So, wh- why are we, why are we forcing an issue to give this person a book? And, uh, you know, we're not saying that's, you know, and latterly across the board, we're giving everybody a book that's a, a department head or whatever. We're just saying we want these special people to get a book.
Commissioners shouldn't have pets. We, we do give budget books throughout the city, okay? It is my responsibility, I as a city commissioner, to know and understand the budget before I vote on it. And sitting down with them was an attempt at learning and understanding the budget and the equipment needs that they have. I think, this is getting so far beyond, and you're, and you're, people are making assumptions of what I want, and, and you're not listening to what I'm saying. It, I wanted to sit down and have a discussion about the budget, the equipment, the numbers, and how that works. The departments gave us spreadsheets of what they need. The fire department gave us a spreadsheet last September of what they need, and yet I don't see any of that in the budget. So, I don't see that it's micromanaging, I don't see that it's outside the realm of my responsibilities to know and understand what the department needs and, and how that works. The fire department requested seven hundred and ten thousand dollars in, in equipment men and needs. So, I'm gonna do the homework that I can before I vote on something like that. This was an attempt to learn and understand.
Marilyn, can I ask this? If I may.
I'm sorry, I might have-
If I may. As far as the, as far as the fire department's needs, whether that be staffing or equipment needs, the prioritization of those items is up to the city manager.
Right. I never said anything about prioritizing.
I'm just saying.
I never said that.
And if that fire department has concerns over needs, then they need to direct those issues to the city manager.
Again, I am the one who made the request, they did not.
I understand, and, and we are gonna disagree on this issue, because I think you're overstepping your bounds-
Okay, let's take a vote. Come on. Let's move on.
Anyway, there's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
No.
Bunton.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
No.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay, next.
Item nine, approve purchases and payment of invoices. Need a motion?
Remove pay purchase and invoices, ask presented.
Second.
Any questions? Commissioner Raker.
Uh, in regards to the cement repairs, um, as I went through the descriptions, um, they were kind of- kind of, I didn't understand, like, it would say driveway or, are these actually identified locations or are we just like saying how many numbers? We're.
Not knowing exactly which spot you're talking about, but like, you know, the, for example, in the sidewalks, there's four inch and six inch concrete. Six inch might've had a driveway notation. That means that it's in this, this section of the sidewalk that's between the approach and the driveway because there's a greater thickness requirement that's there because of vehicles driving over it. So, that's, it's probably just delineating what the different requests are and it means something to us and to them.
But they're, they're not, they're not linked up with a specific location.
Correct.
We're just linking up the number of these efforts we're going to do.
A type of service.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Okay, item 9G.
Move to approve the appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals as presented.
Support.
I have really no issue with this appointment other than unfortunately, we don't have comparisons as, as to all the people who have applied. I don't think this person did apply. This is specifically for the liaison? Okay, all right. So, I'm prepared to vote on that. That's, that's fine.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
Yes. Historical commissioner.
Move to approve the, the, the appointment to the historic commission as presented.
Support.
Have no issue with this.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Mount Clemens Public Library.
Yes, move to approve the, the nominee to the library commission as presented.
Support.
All right, this is where I have questions. And the reason, because these were all bundled together, we had been down this road once before about, I didn't want to have to hold up any of the others that I really didn't have any issue with. But on this one here, I looked, this is a board that's not even advertised and I also looked on the, the public libraries website and they didn't have anything either. So, I'm wondering if the city manager, the city attorney can explain the relationship as to like what our responsibilities are and if this was socialized for potential appointment to the public in general. I mean, because receiving a letter saying, hey, so and so has circumstance and now we want our replacement to be the follow, just vote on this, I feel the need to at least ask the question.
It's my understanding, there is no ordinance of the city relating to the library. The library's a distinct and separate entity. The library's bylaws, I presume, have language that its board's going to be comprised of three people appointed by the city, three people appointed by the school board, and then they would appoint a seventh, if they have seven. I don't even know that. But that is the gist of it. There is nothing in our ordinances that spell out our involvement with the library.
So, why are we voting on a, a nominee?
Because the mayor has recommended appointing that person.
Actually, there was a letter from, it was a simple letter, is all it was.
The motion is the mayor recommends. The library board sent a letter saying, we would recommend that person, but the mayor could have, I suppose, recommended somebody else for your consideration.
And my concern is how that name was publicly socialized, was it even publicly socialized to give other people the opportunity to serve on the library? I couldn't find anything that demonstrated that on their website or ours. In our website, there's nothing that says anything about the library commission.
That'd be a good question for dialogue.
And I, and quite honestly, I'm, I'm not prepared to vote on it today. I would, I'll take the required action on it when we have some more substantive answers, I think. Does this, if none of you have the answer, I would encourage us not to vote on this.
What, what answer to what? Whether, whether the library board?
Yes.
Publicized, we have an opening?
Yeah. It's kind of important. I mean, they serve a public body.
Commissioner Bunton, please.
If the library recommended this person, I mean, to me, it just seems like a normal procedure that if somebody wants somebody on their board and we have to give them permission to do so, that we just say that, that's fine, you can, you can have this person, that you want to be on your board because you have already investigated it. And, and as far as publicizing it, it's their job. All they're doing is asking us to okay with their recommendation. So, it has nothing to do, we don't, we can't go to the, to the library and tell them that they have to publicize something.
I'm not telling them to, I'm asking what their procedures were. Apparently, we don't have them.
Commissioner Hill.
I agree with what Commissioner Bunton said and I also happen to know Wendy Callanan and I think she's an excellent candidate. So, I see no problem with approving it.
I will say this much. I believe that Wendy Callanan is probably a fantastic candidate, but my issue has consistently been about the process of making appointments. And if you don't want to learn about it correctly, that's your choice. I suggest that as a body, we do.
So, what are you saying? We, we're incorrect all the time because you're correct?
I didn't say that you are incorrect all the time.
The whole point is that they recommended this and it's okay for us to approve it because we didn't invest in it in the first place. It's their recommendation and we're just going to approve their recommendation. Can we move on?
Has there been a, a motion to approve this one? Is that?
That was the motion to this guy.
Okay, motion to approve.
You made the motion.
Okay.
I said yes, that is correct.
Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
No.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is.
Consent agenda.
Approve all the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, Antonard, okay. Roll call.
Mensah.
Yes.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, sir. There are a couple of items on the, well, several items on the city manager report for this week. Master plan update status, there was a review committee meeting where we conducted interviews on April 29th and a recommendation is forthcoming for approval by mayor and commission in the next few weeks on a, on a recommended vendor or respondent for that master plan update. Number two, strategic planning process update. We expect a SEMCOG draft of the strategic plan developed at our recent meetings in the next few weeks. The most recent meeting and subsequent work resulted in the development of a specific priorities in several areas. The draft would be reviewed by the mayor and commission with feedback to SEMCOG resulting in a final plan that would then be presented for approval at a mayor and commission meeting in the near future. Number three, an election reminder, there is an election regarding the road funding proposal on Tuesday, May 5th. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on election day. If you have any questions regarding your precinct or anything else related to this important opportunity to vote on May 5th, please feel free to contact the clerk's office at 586-469-6818, extension three. We had a good news item that was provided by Brian Tingley, our director of community development. He pointed out that, that a existing information technology type business in the city of Mount Clemens, I-Wire Software Studios, is experiencing growth and because of that, having an expansion. I provided a link for a news story, which is something that I wouldn't recommend trying to take down. It's pretty lengthy. If anybody's interested in that, they can give a call to me at this, at city hall to provide the link and I'd be happy to either email it or go through it with them. Number five, mass transit evaluation process from Macomb County. City administration and Mayor Dempsey recently participated in the first meeting of the policy committee and the technical committee that will evaluate future transit options and initiatives for grassage. Future meetings include, our future meetings will be scheduled for the two committees and will be discussed in the future as terms of exact dates as well as possible timelines for activity in those, in those meetings and in those committees. The regional transit authority or the RTA is holding a kickoff event in Detroit at Campus Marshes on May 12th. Plans are also being made for a Macomb County event on May 20th and more information will be provided on that when it becomes available. Number six, interesting development for us, the Macomb area communities for regional opportunities or MACRO, their May meeting. MACRO has begun rotating monthly meetings among member communities. We had originally agreed to host the September 2015 meeting, but we recently agreed to switch with another community because of some problems they were having with availability of the, of the location for the meeting that they had proposed. So, we are going to host the May 14th, 2015 meeting instead. The topic, interestingly enough, is information technology services and the meeting will be held at city hall at 2:00 PM. So, we will be hosting MACRO this month if you're interested, May 14th at 2:00 PM. And that's the last item that I had this evening.
Is that open to the public, that meeting?
Uh, yes. It's not really, it's not really posted as such, but I'm sure that it would be technically open to the public. It's not really, you know, anything that we restrict access to. Pretty sure that it doesn't really get posted as, as a public meeting because of the nature of the, of the group, as far as I know. But I can check into the details on that just to make sure because I've never posted for a MACRO meeting.
Thank you.
We'll double check and make sure we handle it appropriately, though.
Commissioner Mensah.
Just out of curiosity, where are you going to put all those people?
Uh, it's not an all those people kind of thing. Frankly, the crowd isn't that big usually. More like 10, 10 to 15 typically. So, we either do it in the commission chambers and/or in our conference room depending on which one is required. It's a pretty small group mostly. Usually, there is no public attendance. It's just the, the members of the communities that attend and maybe some staff members.
Okay. Commissioner Comment. Mr. Campbell, are you looking for a comment in all those papers?
No, I have a few comments here. Regarding the residents that came in about the properties over in the neighborhood over there, I agree with them fully. Who owns these properties? They need to be held responsible to clean them up and take care of the land and structures that they own. But the question I have is, why were they allowed to get in such bad condition in the first place if we have code enforcement? Regarding the proposal on the senior housing, which is strongly opposed, it was opposed 10 years ago or however many it was, I see no change in the lack of support of that project. So, to me, that's a dead issue. Regarding the budget issues, please address your concerns on the proposed budget to any of us. I do represent the entire city and I'm willing to listen to anybody. And I have made my concerns to the city manager on several occasions regarding some issues within the budget. With that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill.
Well, yesterday, approximately 200 people participated in the crop walk. I have to stand up and show you my T-shirt that I got for walking. The, this raised money to address issues of hunger throughout the world, the United States, and here in Mount Clemens. Mount Clemens welcomed the participants with a beautiful day and a proclamation from Mayor Dempsey, which was read and presented by our mayor, Protem Gary Blash. The course was a one mile, a one square mile area primarily around the downtown and the walkers could choose to walk the route as many times as they wished. I would venture to guess that most of the walkers chose to walk between one and three miles. My husband, Tom, and I walked five miles, as that is the distance people walk in many countries to obtain fresh water every day. We enjoyed the walk, but we were happy to be finished and we were happy not to be carrying over 40 pounds of water for that distance, as many women in Africa do every day. I want to say a big thank you to everyone who donated to our walk. Thanks to the generosity of many people, Tom and I were able to raise over $1,000 for this very worthy cause. So, again, thank you to all those who donated. As Mr. Brown reported, or as we've discussed earlier, we are talking about a program to repair the sidewalks. I think this is sounding promising. I really hope that we get it going this summer. Our sidewalks need to be repaired. And I, I think the, the program that Mr. Brown suggested is a workable program. This is probably one of the most hottest city commission meetings I remember in a long time. But it's important for people to express their opinions, to be heard, and to get their questions answered. So, for everybody who participated tonight, thank you for your participation. Also, as part of the consent agenda, well, actually, it didn't turn out to be the consent agenda. We approved the mayor's recommendations for Richard Shoemaker to be a liaison between the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. We approved Mickey McGee to be on the historic commission. And we, I think, approved Wendy Callanan to be appointed to the Mount Clemens Public Library Board. I want to thank those individuals and all the other people who are volunteers in the city for all the boards and committees. And once again, speaking of hot issues, we discussed the management of the wastewater and sewer departments. This is a very important issue. And the, the main thing that I think stops us from voting for the management firm is the cost of the service. And I don't know how we're going to overcome this, but it is important that we have good management of the, of these important assets. So, I hope we can resolve this issue soon. Lastly, don't forget to exercise your right and responsibility to vote tomorrow. Thank you. Have a good evening and a great week.
Commissioner Raker.
Thank you, Protem. I think you did a very good job facilitating this meeting this evening. In regards to those that have come out and spoke at public comment and those who spoke when there's not public comment, I appreciate your continued involvement civically. Also, I think there are quite a few of you that should consider potentially getting your name on the ballot because your advocacy, knowledge, and, and leadership would be a great addition to any elected body in this town or county or state. So, I'm just encouraging you. In regards to the appointments, I don't think clearly this board understood the dynamic between the library and the city and the school board. And that's the clarity I was seeking. And if we all don't have that clarity, which I'm confident we don't, then we should have got an informative explanation ahead of time. This, what we received was not an application. It was a letter from a seated board or actually the director saying who they wanted. I, I believe we do require an application. And so, this is a little unorthodox and I'm not trying to stop anybody from volunteering. I just want a process that is inclusive because if you can't tell me how I can get on this board of the library, then how did she get on the board of the library? I mean, was it just because she knew somebody? Was it accessible to the public? From my, from, from, at first blush, it was not and is not on our list of boards or commissions in this town. And it is not on the, the, the library. So, maybe it's on the school boards. I don't know. Is it that big of a deal? Out of principle, I believe yes. I'm sure Ms. Callanan is going to be a fantastic addition and I wish her well and I will support her. But there should be a process that is understood before we take, without assumption, before we take votes. And that's what I was driving to and that's my point. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Me too. Commissioner Mensah.
May is Military Appreciation Month as designated by the United States Congress. It is a time for us to recognize and honor those on active duty in all branches of the military, the National Guard, reserves, retirees, veterans, and their families. In the history of the United States, there have been 90 million people that have served our country. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank and honor Mayor Protem Blash for his service to our country and Commissioner Raker for his service and any veterans in our audience or who may be listening at home tonight or viewing on the city website. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall will be at the Clinton Township Civic Center on Romeo Plank Road, May 21 through 25. It was last year in 2010. There's an opening day ceremony set for 6:00 PM, the 21st. A reading of the names of Michigan soldiers killed in action is set for 7:00 PM, the 22nd. in action is set for 7:00 PM, the 22nd. And closing ceremonies are set for May 25th at 4:00. For those of you that haven't visited that, it's really very emotional and moving. It's guarded 24/7 by member, by veterans. So if you, you know, want to go at 3:00 in the morning, there will be somebody there to talk with you and, and in honor of that, that wall. I want to remind you that All About Animals is offering free neutering spading of your dogs to Mount Clemens residents. It's going to save you about 125 bucks. So if you have animals or you have neighbors that have animals, please remind them of that. You can call the County Animal Shelter or County Animal Control, or you can go to their website, allaboutanimalrescue.org. For Mount Clemens residents, Ridge Con Construction is holding their annual No Roof Left Behind program. You can nominate somebody who needs a roof on their house and doesn't have the funds to pay for it. They want you to, you can go to their website, download an application. They want you to include a few pictures of the roof condition and why you are nominating that person for the, for the roof. That is through the end of May. The nomination, or the, the winner will be announced in July. So the materials are donated by roofing manufacturers. The work is performed by a local contractor for free. So that's a great, you know, great program, great benefit. The county is offering, for those of you, people with kindergarteners, the free vision and hearing screenings for the, for the upcoming school year. There are various dates and appointment times available. Call the county health department. And finally, I wanted to give a shout out to Benjamin Elliott from Mount Clemens High School. Ben was recently honored at the county's All Academic Banquet. He's holding a 4.047 GPA. He intends to go on to Oechita, Oechita Baptist University. We just wanted to say congratulations, Ben, President Plain, and his parents, David and Christie, who are proud to have you represent Mount Clemens High School and our city as one of Macomb County's brightest and best. And it was brought to my attention that the sheriff department has been designated a prescription drug disposal site by Families Against Narcotics. So you can just take prescriptions, nothing in liquid, and they don't accept needles or syringes, but you can just take them right up there to Groceback at any time of the day, and they will dispose of them for you for free. Those are my comments tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Bunton.
Okay, just a comment about concerns about the budget. You know, I represent the city of Mount Clemens as well, but, and you can ask me questions about the budget, but I would probably end up referring you to experts on questions that I have no expertise on. I prefer you to use the experts for the serious and important things. Commenting or asking me difficult questions about the budget, you know, you may get the right answer or you may not. So again, I represent the city, but when it comes to real tough details, I'm going to refer you to the experts. I want to commend Lois Hill, Commissioner Lois Hill, for her transparency in announcing who got what as far as the nominations and the appointments to the various boards. And I encourage you to continue to do that, and that'll be some of the transparency that we look forward to. Okay, I guess we'll move on to that stuff. Oh, anyway, Happy Mother's Day to all whom it may apply this weekend, as Mother's Day weekend. You are truly a jewel to be appreciated. So thank you for all the mothers. Public announcement, staying out of prison, walking you through the criminal justice system, preteens, teens, and parents are welcome. We're trying to help keep our young people out of prison. This will take place on Thursday, May 14th, at North Broadway Church of Christ, 260 North Broadway, Mount Clemens, 48043. The phone number, 586-463-6931. The time is 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. People who will be attending this, Anthony Wickersham, McComb County Sheriff, Eric Jackson, former McComb County probation officer, Dwayne E. Fox, former Oakland and Michigan parole officer, Yolanda Curtsy Hooper, Hooper Curtsy, former probation officer, Harris County, Texas, and educator at Michigan Department of Corrections. I encourage you to inform members in your community and people that can make this, this session. It's a good thing to let the kids know what their problems can be once they get themselves in the penal system. I just encourage you to spread the word. Again, it's open to everybody, preteens, teens, and parents. Parents need to know about this as well. Date is May 14th, May 14th, and time, 6:00 to 7:30. Tomorrow's a very important election. I cannot tell you how to vote, but I can tell you that you should read the entire ballot to see exactly what you, what is contained in this proposal. The devil is in the details. Do not depend on the cleverly produced TV ads and/or comments by special interest groups. Be an informed voter, and most of all, please vote. So Commissioner Wisdom for the night. "A loyal friend laughs at your jokes when they are not so good and sympathizes with your problems when they're not so bad." This is by Arnold H. Glasgow. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Well, I just have a couple of things that I'd like to, to share with you. I drove past the, at Commissioner Campbell's suggestion, I drove by the, the property on North Walnut today, spoke with the demolition crew that was there, and they assured me that by tomorrow, that that site will look a lot better. They were, pretty, pretty much had it all knocked down, and they were getting rid of it. But the thing that was disturbing to me is as I left there, and I drove and turned around in the Jermaine Jackson Community Center, that building is in need of some tender loving care. Not only the building, but the grounds. And it's not that old a building that it should look the way it looks. It almost appears to me that the overhang where you walk into the building, not only is it falling down, it's, it's going to be subjected to scrappers because pretty soon they're going to just rip it down. And so whomever is in, in charge of that facility, I would strongly suggest that they get over there and take care of it. And just as a, just as a response to the, a lot of the comments that we received this evening, and, and how ashamed we should be as commissioners. Everyone on this board is doing the best that they know how to do. It may not be exactly how you would do things, but they're doing the best that they know how to do things. And we, if we have to do it twice or three times, we'll make every attempt we can to get it right. And if we don't get it right, you can certainly hold us accountable at the next election session. And lastly, Commissioner Mensah, you mentioned the spade neutering program. If I can get my neighborhood squirrels over there, can they take care of it?
I wish.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Set.
Roll call, please.
Raker.
Yes.
Blash.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.